I think they question me, Davis.
It is.
Yeah.
Good.
Good morning. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM, Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, Board Meeting. We're going to begin our meeting with invocation by Pastor John D'Ubarri, Henry County PD, and then we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand, please.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for your faithfulness and your commitment to us, and we're excited to know that you use us as your instruments of encouragement to people. Father, I continue to lift up our government, continue to ask you to bless them, and also to protect them from all hurt, harm, and danger. And Father, I continue to just thank you for the wisdom that they bring to the table as it relates to making this county a better county. And Father, I thank you, thank you so much for this great county that we live in. I thank you because you're using us to be the light, you're using us to be the encouragement to other counties to see what true government looks like. And I'm thanking you right now for a great time today, in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're going to begin with presentations, recognition of Henry County Employee Retirements, Harold Cooper, HR Director.
Good morning. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM, Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, Board Meeting. We're going to begin our meeting with invocation by Pastor John D'Ubarri, Henry County PD, and then we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand, please.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for your faithfulness and your commitment to us, and we're excited to know that you use us as your instruments of encouragement to people. Father, I continue to lift up our government, continue to ask you to bless them, and also to protect them from all hurt, harm, and danger. And Father, I continue to just thank you for the wisdom that they bring to the table as it relates to making this county a better county. And Father, I thank you, thank you so much for this great county that we live in. I thank you because you're using us to be the light, you're using us to be the encouragement to other counties to see what true government looks like. And I'm thanking you right now for a great time today, in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're going to begin with presentations, recognition of Henry County Employee Retirement, Harold Cooper, HR Director. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're going to begin with presentations, recognition of Henry County Employee Retirement, Harold Cooper, HR Director.
Good morning, Madam Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Distinguished Board Members. I come before you today to honor retirees for the month of June and July. We'll start with June. Mr. Joseph Burke, 25 years of service with the Henry County Fire Department. Mr. Kendall Waiting, 16 years of service with the Henry County Fire Department. Ms. Marilyn Russell, 16 years of service with the County Manager's Office. Ms. Martha Story, 14 years of service with the Henry County Transit Department. Ms. Virginia Cohen, 14 years of service with the Henry County Tax Commissioner's Office. Mr. George Owens, 13 years of service with the Henry County Sheriff's Office. Ms. Elizabeth Peer, 11 years of service with the Henry County State Court Clerk's Office. Collectively, our June retirees have 109 years of experience, and we honor them for their commitment to Henry County. July retirees. Mr. Donald Scarborough, 34 years of service with the Henry County Fire Department. Ms. Lynn Toman, 33 years of service with the Henry County State Court Clerk's Office. Ms. Lynn Witt, 30 years of service with the Henry County Senior Services Department. Mr. Macy O. Brayboy, 20 years of service with the Henry County Police Department. Ms. Kimberly Phelps, 16 years of service with the Henry County Sheriff's Office. Collectively, our July retirees have 133 years of experience. We'd like to thank the retirees of June and July for their service with Henry County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Next, we will have an Aquatic Center update by Jonathan Penn.
Chair, let's get that out of the way.
Okay, thank you. We'll come, we'll come back. Well, let's move forward with our consent agenda. If we have our County Manager, Sherri Matthews, to come forward, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, August 2nd, at 9:00 AM. Under the courts, we have a resolution accepting a grant award from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council in the amount of $135,750 to fund functional family therapy during FY '23. Under Financial Services, we have a resolution approving the purchase of 150 2022 Ford Utility Police Interceptors from Wade Ford of Smyrna, Georgia, in the amount of $7,526,198 for the Police Department through the State of Georgia Contract SWC 99999001, SPD 000001830006, utilizing SPOS V Funds, Fleet Replacement II Funds. We also have a resolution approving an RFP 20-6 for an annual contract for fiber optic cabling and low voltage wiring services as a unit price agreement. Under Facility Maintenance, we have a resolution awarding a bid for janitorial services for county facilities, annual contract to American Facility Services, Inc., in the amount of $560,340. Under Leisure Services, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners requesting approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Board of Regents regarding cooperative extension. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution to accept the amount of $2,000 from the United States Secret Service for the Henry County Police Department's participation in the Electronic Crimes Task Force and approval of the accompanying budget. We also have a resolution approving a bid number, bid award number 22-61 to Celebrity Fencing out of Ellenwood, Georgia, for fencing and gating for the Henry County Public Safety in the amount of $105,500 to be paid out of CE's funds account. Under Stormwater, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to pay the Metro-North Georgia Water Planning District annual dues in the amount of $60,178. And then, under the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, we have a resolution to approve change order to K Team Engineering and Construction in the amount of $156,064.48 to provide general contracting services to two four-unit multifamily apartment buildings located at 101 and 104 George Street and 109 through 112 George Street, purchased by the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. This ends the consent agenda.
Thank you, County Manager. I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
To approve.
Got a second? Any discussion?
Yes. On the bid authorization for the janitorial services, this is a new contract, is this a new contractor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I noticed that on the back, on the Supplier Inclusion Program, they didn't meet the small business, they didn't meet a local vendor, they did not meet veteran-owned, they did not meet DBE, they did not meet female-owned, none of the above applied to this company. Is there a way that we can see if any of those people in those categories bidded on the project?
So I'll have purchasing come forward, but as a reminder, our purchasing policy currently does not require that. We're going through the disparity study, and we're hopeful that we'll bring that to the board, and once we receive that, we will make an amendment to our, or at least bring forth some recommendations, because I know that's one of the things you all have been very clear about in terms of making sure that we are providing opportunities for all vendor types. So while it wasn't required, we can certainly look and see if within that organization or within that group, if they do have those, those individuals.
Yeah, so, yeah, I want to say again, the question was, did anybody in those categories even apply? So since we, yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay, we can, I will verify, Commissioner, and I'll let you know. Thank you.
I don't have those bid documents in front of me, so without looking, I can't state whether or not they filled out their supplier inclusion form. The supplier inclusion form is not mandatory, as it does not pertain to the purchasing policy currently. And as County Manager Ms. Matthews said, as soon as we get through the disparity study, there will be changes that will need to be made to the policy to adopt.
Right. So again, Chair, I would respectfully ask that we would remove this from the consent agenda and let them bring it back to the consent agenda once we have the information. I would just want to see that anybody even applied. Was this only one vendor that applied for this that's getting a half a million dollars for janitorial services? I know that even the, a company that we have now met some of those, so I want to know if they even reapplied for it. So I'm really concerned about this being on the consent agenda.
So we will move it to the regular agenda. Can you go and find out what we need so we can handle this in this meeting today? Because Hutch needs these services.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to move this to the regular agenda, the resolution for bid janitorial service for county facilities, annual contract, move that to the regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda with this removal?
One more thing about it, Chair. When does the other one, because Chair Harrell just said that we need to move on this today, but we have a vendor in place now, when does that vendor's contract end?
So I think-
Because I don't think it's, yeah.
Hutch is back there. Come on up, Hutch.
Good morning.
Good morning.
That contract ends the end of September.
So we have time.
Yeah, we want to be able to allow the new company to have time to get mobilized.
So we're in August now, so if we rebid it, then we will do a month-to-month with them.
We're going to hear what she has to say.
Okay.
And we will make a decision. It's going to be on the regular consent, I mean, on the regular, on the regular agenda so then we can vote however we decide to vote.
So we just need to get the information to you, Commissioner.
Right, we need the information. It will be presented today.
Okay, thank you.
So we got a motion and a second on the consent agenda. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Motion, Chair.
And Chair, I know that this is not on the agenda, but I won't have any other time to sneak it on this employee, but as many of you all know, Ron Burkhalter will be leaving the county. Actually, Friday is his last day. Ron has been stumbling with this whole retirement thing for some time, and he committed to making sure that we would get some major projects completed and started, one being the FBO at the airport, and then specifically our Aquatic Center and Judicial Center. So I want to take this time now, because he's threatened me, like in a professional way, to not do anything for him, but I think we all need to just stop and recognize Ron. He's been here for about 12 years and has done just about everything in the county, and I personally want to thank him. We're going to miss him a lot, but he is going to go and retire and enjoy his 20 acres with his horses and all the other stuff that he enjoys doing. So thank you, Ron, for your service to Henry County.
Ron, stand up. Let us see you, Ron. Ron, you can get Sherri later. Okay, now we're going to move to our regular agenda, Human Resources, regarding Wage and Salary Administration Plan.
Good morning again. I came before the board June 21st in reference to a Wages and Salary Administration Study Resolution. So I'm going to recap the reason why I think it's needed, and I'm going to also speak specifically about the Southeast Region later in this presentation. Evergreen Solutions is the company that we would like to use for our Wages and Salary Administration Study. We've come to this place because November 27th, 2018, the Board of Commissioners at that particular time voted two resolutions into place, 18-245 and 18-246. 18-245, Classification and Compensation Policy Guidelines; 18-246, Employee Classification and Compensation Plan and Structure contracted through the Archer Company. When you look at the logistics of both resolutions, the first one, 18-245, it provides a policy outline, or guideline, I should say, of how we, as a county, can conduct comprehensive compensation processes while remaining relevant in the Southeast workforce market. When you look at 18-246, the Employee Classification and Compensation Plan and Structure Resolution, it was the resolution in which Henry County contracted with the Archer Company to conduct a classification and compensation study that would require ongoing maintenance. Fast forward two years, December 14th, 2021, to be exact, no one saw what was coming, a tsunami of issues, the COVID-19 pandemic, inflation rate being at an all-time high. So as a result, the Department of Human Resources attempted to do something in a manner to save and protect our most valued resources, our employees. We came before this board on three occasions discussing pay increases. December 14th, 2021 was the first time. We followed that up February 1st, when we looked at the various scenarios offered by this distinguished board in terms of pay increases, and then March 1st, with a pay increase finally being adopted by this board, in which an 8.5% increase was afforded to employees. During those meetings, there was one constant, however, that from some of this board, these board members, we needed a study of some sort, so that we wouldn't have to be reactionary going forward. So as a result, HR partnered with our Finance Department, and in particular, our Purchasing and Procurement Unit, and we bid for a request and proposal for services. The steps related to this process was followed. The request was made by HR. The RFP was advertised on county websites, the Georgia Local Government Access.org website, and Team Georgia Marketplace website. The RFP was advertised for four weeks. The RFP was submitted, review committees evaluated the various proposals, the top-scoring vendor was recommended for award. That top vendor was Evergreen. This is just a snapshot of Evergreen accomplishments. More than 17 years of experience in human resource count, consulting. Evergreen operates in 46 states. They've done over 800 Wages and Salary Administration studies of this kind. They have a specific interest in local government. They understand the lay of the land here, having conducted 45 studies in the state of Georgia, most recently Columbus, Muskogee County, and Cobb County. If approved, there'll be an interactive process with the consulting firm in Henry County. Henry County will have a designated as a project manager. Evergreen Solutions will have Dr. Jeff Ling, who is their CEO, and also a certified compensation professional, as the principal of this project, and the project director, also known as the project manager or implementation manager, would be Ms. Nancy Berkeley, who has over 30 years of experience and executive levels in HR. Evergreen Solution will also provide consultants as support staff who will help us with this study, and they'll be here, boots on the ground, a minimum of three weeks, or three days a week. The process is a six-step process. Quite naturally, the initial meeting will take place. Data will be collected, that's step one. Step two, focus groups. The consulting team will meet with department heads, will meet with employees, to gather what they do by way of job audits and job analysis. Step three, they'll review the 355 job classes that we have, and see if we need to revise, upgrade, develop, or review our classification plan on a whole as it relates to these job categories. Step four, they'll identify benchmark positions, not only from a metro Atlanta standpoint, but from a statewide standpoint, and identify where we are in terms of competitive pay. Step five, they'll develop and revise our pay grade plan if need be. Step six, a final report will be performed, and a final presentation will be provided to the board. Based on their relevance in this field, based on their experience, based on their understanding, the Department of Human Resources still holds true to form in terms of recommending Evergreen Solutions as the consultant to assist us with a Wage and Salary Administration Study. Before I open it up for questions, I'd like to add three more key points as it relates to wages in comparison to where we look at from a statewide perspective. We've beat this drum ad nauseam. Every one of you know that Henry County is the ninth largest county in the state of Georgia. I want you to pay important emphasis to Cherokee County and Forsyth County. Cherokee County has over 273,000 citizens. Forsyth County has over 266,000 citizens, and we now have 249,000 citizens. So we're of like size, pretty much. When you look at household median income in the state of Georgia, you'll see Forsyth County at number one, you'll see Cherokee County at number four. Again, Forsyth County has 266,000-plus citizens, Cherokee County has 273,000 citizens. Henry County is ranked 14th. We're ranked ninth in population size, but 14th in median income. We have 958 full-time staff that reside in Henry County. If we look at the full-time and part-time staff collectively, we have 1,182 staff members that reside in Henry County. So we definitely need to look at our Wages and Salary Administration Plan. Let's take benchmark positions. The state of Georgia in the Southeast Region is the second-largest state behind my home state, Florida. We have 11 million-plus citizens in the state of Georgia. Florida has 21 million. When you look at average salaries from bordering states within the Southeast Region, and look at where we stand from a Henry County perspective in comparison to state averages here in Georgia, here's what you'll find out. At HR specialist position, on average, we pay $45,777. The Georgia average is $47,000. Average firefighter salary, we pay $49,102. The Georgia average is $50,500. Average recreation assistant position, we pay $29,936. Georgia pays $37,500. The average planner position, we pay $51,390. The average Georgia salary is $56,000. The only position in which we're leading the pack as a municipality is our laborer's position, where we're paying $32,841 in comparison to Georgia and the bordering Southeast Region states, who are coming in at $29,000, $31,000, and $28,500. When you go back to our accountant tech position, we pay $40,927. The average pay for Georgia is $45,000. When we embarked on this journey in December, it was reactionary mode, because again, no one saw COVID-19 coming, no one saw inflation rates becoming an all-time high, no one saw the great resignation dilemma, but we had to do something. But if we have a Wages and Salary Administration Plan in place that requires ongoing maintenance in which this company will train the trainer, where there will be ongoing maintenance, we won't have to deal in reactionary mode going forward. Too often, we try to address the effect, but not, without understanding the cause. So I yield for questions at this time.
Could you read out the questions from the board?
Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Thomas.
So back in the beginning of last, well, actually, the end of last year, you did a study, but you did the study for the metro area-
Correct.
-to come up with the figures that we base the pay raises on, is that correct?
Correct.
For the metro area. Are we losing employees to surrounding states or to the surrounding counties?
We're losing employees to not only counties, but the region as well, okay? And we're losing employees to the private sector as well. Again, we're not going to ever be completely comparable to the private sector, but Quick Trip, for example, Commissioner Wilson, they're offering $52,000 for assistant managers' positions with no experience, right? So I think what's more telling than anything is the fact that we need to be up to par just on average with the state of Georgia, and that's why I showed this illustration here.
Okay. So the last presentation that you brought to the board was, I think you mentioned that this company would do a nationwide study for $62,500. Now, we narrowed it down to a Southeast study for the same price. Shouldn't there be a little, shouldn't there be a difference in the, in the cost of that if they're going to narrow it down to the Southeast versus a nationwide?
When they do these type of studies, they do it, again, they operate in 46 different states. They want us to be competitive when it comes to public sector- when it comes to public sector government on a whole. So, some of the data that they use, they're looking at it from a national perspective, but they're going to drill down to the southeast region. I mean, just on a whole, when you look at this information here, Georgia, for the beginning job here, we're tied for third amongst those neighboring states. Now, again, Georgia's the second-largest state in the southeast region. So, we're part of that, but we're still under standards as it relates to the Georgia average. When it comes to firefighters, we're ranked fourth as a state. When it comes to the information tech position, we're ranked second as a state. When it comes to the recreation assistant position, we're ranked fourth as a state. When it comes to the planner position, we're dead last as a state. When it comes to the labor position, like I said before, we're above par as a county. But, when it comes to the accountant tech position, we're tied for third again as a state. So, again, when you look at neighboring states being as close as a hundred and fifty miles away, I dare say that we have a problem, not only from a bedroom community standpoint, Commissioner Wilson, but also from a bordering state standpoint as well.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you.
First, let me thank you so much for that report. It was very well presented and so much of it was needed information. One of the things, by having this independent contractor come in and do this type of work, it gives us a sense of assurance that the work has been done by a competent company. You said they've been doing it seventeen years, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you so much for that. Another thing is an independent study. If I remember correctly, there was questions before and questioning of this staff about their capabilities of doing it and having some personal preferences in the process. Trying to choose my words very carefully. And that will eliminate that by bringing in this company as well. Another thing is that this is data. This is information. This is research. And I am one that questioned before having to make a very big decision that was quite costly on emotions. And I remember stating several times, we're very emotionally charged here. We're very emotionally involved here. And we didn't have the data that we actually needed to support the emotional requests. And I am one of your corporates that talked about that. And this will eliminate that. You will have the research to support your requests, correct?
Correct. And I, I, I think you hit the nail on the head there, Madam Vice Chair, because emotion promotes reaction, right? And I talked about that earlier. I don't ever want to come to this board and be in reactionary mode. I want us to have a process in place where there's standard maintenance that we could follow. So, whenever there's another nationwide crisis, we'll be able to pivot and we'll be able to handle it accordingly.
Well, thank you, because I do remember that. It's a very uncomfortable position because people are in need and when they're emotionally charged, you feel a need to do something, but it's not your best work. And I could not give my best work being emotionally charged as well. And also, by having this information, the research and the data, the numbers, we have accountability. We have accountability of funds that are being expended in different areas as well. And that, to me, is something that we need to make sure we can present to our constituents if indeed we make another thirteen million dollars, eighteen million dollar adjustments. We have some accountability as to how, why, and what's there to support it. And I say that again to say again, I think your report was very in-depth. I do appreciate you all going to this length to make sure that we get this information before the board. And we do need to find a way to make sure we, you guys, and I say human resources and our manager and whatever, has the information they need to present to us so that we can make competent, accountable decisions on behalf of our citizens. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anglin.
Two questions and a comment. Harold, thank you to you and David for your hard work. How is this different? I think it's important for our constituents to understand. How is this different than the study we did back in November where we approved? I just think that outline real quickly is important for them.
For one, this company will have, quite frankly, more resources to be able to do a more comprehensive study, right? We just simply looked at the bedroom communities of Henry County and how it affected us right then and there from an immediate emergent matter standpoint. This will afford us, Commissioner Anglin, an opportunity to have a process going forward where we won't have to come to this board again in a knee-jerk reaction mode. There'll be solid maintenance in place. And I want the board to clearly understand this. At the conclusion of this study, this doesn't mean we run up here and say, hey, we need seventy million dollars for raises. That's not how this works. Whatever adjustments that we need to make, we'll make incrementally and we'll make in collaboration with this board.
So, perfect segue into my second question. Will they help us in the, will Evergreen help us in the implementation of those pay increases?
They will help us with looking at how those increases should be implemented. So, to answer your question, yes. But, I think what's really key, again, is once they come in and do this service, we will be able to own the ongoing maintenance. The trainer trainer piece, Commissioner Anglin, is key with this. We'll have our own database. We'll be able to track. We'll be able to look at the southeast region. We'll be able to drill down and look at the bedroom communities of Henry County to ensure that, one, we're competitive, and, two, we're able to retain employees.
So, one comment, I just want the folks that I help serve in the district to understand why I've changed my mind is, one, I am plan-oriented. I mean, everything I do, even in my business, it provides us a process moving forward. And then also understanding that this is a study that we can't do in-house because we don't have the resources to do it. So, once again, Harold, thank you for your time, and David, thank you for y'alls as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve human resources going forth and into contract with Evergreen to complete this study.
Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have the Henry County Water Authority resolution. We'll have our county attorney, Nancy Rowan, come forth.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. The Henry County Water Authority actually submitted two proposals to the Board of Commissioners. One, the first one being a proposed amendment to the Stormwater Utility Ordinance, requesting an exemption from stormwater fees. So, just to kind of give a little background information, not just to the commissioners, but to the community as a whole, the Henry County Stormwater Management Department was established in two thousand and four and it's responsible for the development and implementation of Stormwater Pollution Abatement Project within or incorporated Henry County. I put this slide in here because this was actually a question that I asked Alex that he needed to clarify for me. But, the Henry County Stormwater Department manages water that is weather-based, such as heavy rain or snow, to stop erosion and flooding, whereas the Henry County Water Authority manages drinking water and wastewater. And that's water that's been used in the home. The businesses are a part of an industrial process. So, basically, through the Henry County Ordinance, the Stormwater Management is able to access a utility usage charge that used through Section three dash five dash five oh seven A. Section three dash five dash five oh eight A, which is the ordinance in which the Water Authority is asking for an amendment actually governs credits and exemptions to the Stormwater Management Utility Service fees. Currently, the exemptions, and I'm not gonna go through them verbatim, but those entities that are exempt from exemption fees are landlining within the cities of Stockbridge, McDonough, Hampton, and Locust Grove. Parcels that meet the definition of undeveloped property, linear railroad right-ofways, and it goes through all a specific property with the railways in which are exempt. The Henry County Roads and Right-ofways that are owned by Henry County and the Georgia Department of Transportation Roads and Right-ofways are also exempt. As I stated previously, Section five dash five oh eight B gives credits. The Stormwater Management Utilities shall grant credits or adjustments based on the technical and procedural criteria set forth by the Henry County Stormwater Utility Fees Credit Manual. The ordinance actually defines credits, and I'm not gonna go through the whole definitions, but credit means a condition reduction in the amount of the stormwater service charges to an individual property, and that's based on the provision set out in the manual fees by stormwater facilities. Currently, the credits that are received by the Henry County Water Authority are listed here. And hopefully, you have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you so that you can see the current credits that the Henry County Water Authority already receives. So, the amendment that the Henry County Water Authority is asking for, they're basically asking for Section three dash five oh eight A to add as an exemption, number six. And I'm not gonna read through the whole ordinance, but basically, what it allows is all of the Henry County Authority properties to be exempt from a stormwater utility fee, except for, as you see at the bottom, the Henry County Water Authority's administrative office complex and maintenance facility located at sixteen ninety-five Georgia Highway, twenty west McDonough. They shall still pay a stormwater fee. The reasoning that the Henry County Water Authority gave for this is they have their own stormwater fee, excuse me, stormwater program in which they, you know, attempt to avoid stormwater erosion as much as possible. And based on that, they are asking for this exemption. So, we, Alex, the head of Stormwater Department, he is here today. He's gonna talk about his recommendation regarding that recommendation for amendment of the five oh eight dash A to add that exemption.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. As we said before, stormwater utility definition is a user fee. And throughout the state and the nation, it's customary that any type of a transmission lines, that could be a railroad or water line or sanitary sewer line, they are exempt along with state and local roadways. They're exempt from stormwater utility and any type of a infrastructure connected to them. For example, if we have a pump station. Usually, the reasoning for that is they are surrounded by grassy areas. And to relate it back to the credits, the credits are allowed for any type of a best management practices or BMPs that reduce or eliminate flooding and/or stream pollution. Therefore, these small areas that they are normally bound by grassy areas and as a filtration system, they are exempt. And they relate themselves back to the credit system. However, facilities like we had in DeKalb County, CDC, and all other government institutions, they had to pay for stormwater utility because they are actually impacting and putting a load on our stormwater as far as the pollution and stream flooding concern. However, these facilities are also eligible to apply for credits per our credit manual, and we entertain that. So, I do agree with the amendments as stated.
And just to, just to make clear, the amendment to Section three dash five dash five oh eight A six, my understanding is that you're fine with the amendment. However, you did want to include any additional facilities that were built by the Water Authority if that did occur.
In the future, in the future.
So, just pointing that out, kind of going back a little bit or what have you, there at the bottom, it names a specific building. And what Alex and I discussed is that what he would want is if there was any other facility in the future other than the specific buildings listed in the provision of the ordinance, that the county would be able to actually leverage a fee against that facility also. So, are there any questions?
Yes, I do have some questions. So, they're asking for, I know the Water Authority is here, Tony and Scott, can you guys come up because I have some specific questions? Can you go back to the slide, Nancy, that you show where they already receive? You have a slide with some that-
They're already receiving credits?
Credits, okay.
This is, these are the current credits they're receiving.
So, these locations are current, that they're receiving the exemptions?
They're receiving-
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. And these locations are basically what, like our reservoirs and treatment facilities and?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. That's the water treatment plants, the wastewater treatment plants, wastewater lift stations, water booster pump stations. And most of these facilities, like our water treatment plant facilities, the water actually runs off into the reservoir and from the reservoir, the Tawalaga, or, excuse me, the Tuscaloosa Reservoir flows into Butts County. And with our Tawalaga Reservoir, it runs into Spalding County once it leaves Henry County. So, there's really no stormwater management there. And-
So, do you have to apply for these credits every year?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we have to go through an administrative process of applying for each of these credits. And we apply. Alex and his staff reviews them. And it takes up a substantial amount of time applying for these credits.
Okay. And so, then also, what you wanted to add was the Tuscaloosa Public Use Area and the Cooper Hatchet?
Yes, ma'am. Those are already included in what we're asking for as far as the exemption.
Are these on the list, these other ones?
This is my first time seeing this list.
I, I don't see-
Basically, what they're showing here, these are the credits that we're currently receiving. If you agree to this amendment, then we will be exempted with all of our facilities, with the exception of our administrative complex. So, the efforts here, everything on this list, this list goes away. We don't have to apply anymore. It's just an automatic exemption.
Okay. So, then, this is what, I guess, my question would be. As this county continues to grow and expand, then there are going to be expansions or probably additional additions of treatment facilities or whatever. So, so how do we, is that something that would come back before us? Or are you just saying that all of the?
Okay. I, I think I see where you're going. So, yes, we would, I have no objection to what Alex is asking for. So, basically, any facility that is not used for the production of water, the distribution of water, the conveyance, collection, or treatment of sewer. So, basically, if we add, say, another customer care facility somewhere in the county, yes, that facility would be subjected to stormwater fees, and I have no objection to that.
Okay. And so, can we have it worded such as that? So, then we can include all of these that's on this list? Because it doesn't make sense for them to have to come back year after year and ask for exemptions that we give them. I mean, it makes no sense.
And Chair, if I could jump in? What's happening right now is they're not coming to the board. They're having to come to stormwater. And depending on who's sitting in that role, it takes months- And depending on who's sitting in that role, it takes months after months for us to reconcile all of it. So what we're wanting to do is get a resolution that you all give us the authority to provide those exemptions, and then they're not back in front of you all anymore, and stormwater isn't having to approve anything. So this resolution would give them that authority to be exempted. The properties that are structures, we can add language that for any facilities in which customers will utilize, those facilities will not be exempt. So that's an easy fix to the resolution.
Right, because not the domain administration building and-
Correct.
The location next, which, which is noted in here.
Correct.
I just think that this could be a smoother transition and process if we add in the ver- verbiage that Mr. Cornell has stated. Commissioner?
Yeah, and if we could just say this only applies to, and then that'll just clear it up. This only applies to facilities that are water treatment, collection, that-
Yes, ma'am.
That, that, that's the simplest way.
That's simple, yeah. So can we-
I'll change the resolution.
So will you change the resolution?
Yes.
So then can, can we move forward to get a motion to approve?
Move to approve Chair Harrell with the amendment that this, that will state this only applies to facilities for treatment and collection.
Second.
And distribution.
Distribution.
Yes.
So we got a first and a second, any other discussions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more presentation, a proposal by the Water Authority. And that is to enter the Water Authority intergovernmental agreement. My understanding is that there's been an agreement between Henry County and the Water Authority in the past. Basically, the Georgia Environmental Protection Division requires the Henry County Water Authority develop, operate, and maintain a watershed protection plan, plan? I'm sorry. The Georgia Environmental Protection Division requires the Henry County Water Authority develop, operate, and maintain a watershed protection plan in which the authority includes watershed assessments, stream monitoring with the county, a long-term ambient trend monitoring, habitat, and biological monitoring. The county is also required by the North Georgia Water Planning District to develop and maintain a watershed protection plan. And so what the intergovernmental agreement would propose is actually allowing the Henry County Water Authority to develop the watershed protection plan and for the county to utilize that plan. And specifically, the agreement would allow the Henry County, they would develop and continue to update the watershed protection plan, they would employ the necessary personnel and consultants to update the watershed protection plan, and they would also collect the samples and conduct the watershed biological monitoring and reporting. Henry County would be responsible for paying bi- annually, annually, one half of all the costs incurred in providing the service from the county's stormwater funds. The invoice would be paid thirty days after receipt, and the reimbursement shall not exceed ten percent of the previous year work scope. I did talk to the Water Authority attorney regarding this matter because there's not a specific number named inside of the internal, intergovernmental agreement. But because the Water Authority has to pay half, and the county has to pay half of the overall cost, that gives the Water Authority an incentive to keep the costs low. So just in case that's an issue that you all are concerned about. The proposed term of the agreement, the actual first term is from January the first of twenty twenty-three until January the thirty-first of twenty forty-one, which is eighteen years. And they would have, we would be able to renew for five successive one-year terms for up to five years. So it would be an overall twenty-three-year term with renewals. And that was the proposal by the Water Authority. Any questions?
Alex?
Yes, ma'am, I do agree with that because through the state of Georgia and metro North Georgia, which are related to the terms of the Clean Water Act, all municipalities that are required to perform studies, analysis, trend monitoring, and sampling and all that to, to protect the watershed. Now, from stormwater side, we relate to protection of watershed from the pollution and flooding. From the Water Authority side, it relates to drinking water and interception of sanitary sewer contamination to drinking water. So this is a common goal, and I believe that's a good initiative, and I, I support that.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yes?
Nancy, what did we pay before, the proposals for half, what was it before?
My understanding, it was approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the overall consulting fee, and the county paid half of that.
Half of that.
So about fifteen-
Fifty-eight thousand dollars was a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
So if fifty percent be fifty-eight thousand dollars and county share.
Okay, and before it wasn't a half or anything, we, we, did we pay all of it? I see Tony, no, he said, can Tony?
Tony, can you come up and? I got you here today, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make you work today.
Yes, ma'am, I thank y'all for taking these matters up. It has always been halves, the county has always shared half of those costs.
So what's, what's difference in this proposal?
It, it's expiring the end of this year. End of twenty twenty-two, it's expiring, so it, it needs to be renewed.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, you all hear the resolution, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, no other discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Harrell, John Denge is here. Do you want to do the Aquatic Center update, or do you want to put it at the end of the agenda?
Okay, yeah.
You want to, okay, thank you.
Good morning, ma'am, Chair of Board of Commissioners, Madam Vice Chair. This will be a brief update, but just wanted to let you guys know that we are meeting with the firm, the engineering firm, biweekly. They've completed the borings, the soil tests, the surveying, and everything of the property. Everything turns out great, so we're moving forward with the plans. And we plan to have a more in-depth presentation with 3D models and a wow factor for you guys in September. So we are moving along, everything is moving on, on par with the schedule, and we look to have a very in-depth presentation for you guys in September.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Thomas?
You really thought you were going to get away with that?
Hey.
But anyway, I wanted to ask when you do your next presentation to also include something about the other areas around the Aquatic Center that we've been talking about, improving the area in Cotton Field, Cotton-
The golf course.
Yeah, the golf course, yeah, it's gotten the name of it. What other area and improvements that you're looking, looking at as well to be compatible to the Aquatic Center?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you also include that?
Yes, ma'am, we've also been having those discussions as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. No other questions, thank you, Mr. Penn.
Thank you.
Next, we will have our Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing to receive public comments on the draft FY twenty twenty-two Annual Action Plan. Good morning, Ms. Shannon, how you doing?
Good morning, Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the board. I apologize for any confusion. Today's meeting actually was not advertised as a public hearing. We certainly can take any comments if there are any. With that being said, I'll proceed with the presentation. This morning, I am presenting before you all and requesting your consideration for the FY twenty twenty-two Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. HUD announced that Henry County is expected to receive just over one million dollars for the CDBG program and just over five hundred thousand dollars for the home fund program. Now, this will be the first year that we are expected to receive home funds. There have been two presentations before you all previously regarding this allocation, and I've got a brief summary as a reminder of how staff is recommending the use of those funds. Now, we'll, first, with the CDBG program, we have the total allocation of one million forty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Staff has divided these funds considering first and foremost the requirements by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which specify and put limits on funding available for administrative costs as well as public service. Our recommendation does maintain those caps and restrictions limiting the amount recommended for public service and administrative costs. In addition, we are requesting to add economic development specifically for facade improvement funds for small business owners. This would be a first-time use of community development block grant funds for Henry County. We are proposing to reprogram Community Development Block Grant CARES Funds, commonly known as CV. These were funds allocated to the county over a two-year period in response to the COVID pandemic. We have funding that we're seeking to reprogram totaling a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, or, excuse me, exceeding just over a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. These funds were initially allocated to administrative costs, that is, the cost of staff time as well as equipment or supplies needed to operate the program. With the limits of the federal program at twenty percent, we went in initially at twenty percent of the award, but we found that that high number is not necessary for what it takes for our department to successfully carry out the activities. With that, we are requesting to reprogram those funds, awarding those funds directly to sub recipients so those funds can go out into the community to better serve those in need. Additionally, we have the home funds. Again, this is our first time being awarded the home funds. I apologize for my absence at the last meeting, but staff has informed me of your thoughts and comments, and we did make some, some changes to our recommendations. I understood that you all would like to see more funding go into down payment assistance as, and taking that from our tenant-based rental assistance. So you'll see those changes there. I was not given a specific dollar amount, so if you have something more specific in mind, please let me know. But what we've recommended to date was an additional fifty thousand into the down payment assistance program, bringing it to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then that reduced tenant-based rental assistance by fifty thousand, bringing it to a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Again, we do have administrative costs, it is capped at ten thousand, we've maintained that. And then we have a requirement to provide a minimum of fifteen percent of the allocation to the community, to community housing development organizations. Now, we've recommended exceeding that amount. That amount of fifteen thousand brings us to approximately seventy-seven thousand dollars. We want to start at a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars to ensure compliance with requirements. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Yes, Shannon, can you go back to the slide that you just flipped from? Okay, great. So you all moved fifty thousand dollars to the, to down payment assistance and then left a little over a hundred thousand for rental assistance. Now, where, where does this funding go to? This, the, the rental assistance, is this where you all collaborate with nonprofits in the community that are providing rental assistance to our citizens? The down payment assistance program, who would handle that?
So, yes, ma'am, if I can first start with tenant-based rental assistance. As the home program is new to us, we are still working to establish these partnerships. We will have to certify CHODOs, which are community housing development organizations. So these could potentially be just those nonprofits that will assist us in facilitating the TBRA program. It may also be public housing authorities. These will be organizations within our community that can be that arm of the county to extend these funds to make payment for rental costs for residents in need, those who meet the income requirements. I'd like to also state the difference between the TBRA and what we're able to do with COVID dollars or the CDBG is the long term. With CDBG, we're limited to three months. I think we may have up to six months, don't quote me on that, but we've got another shorter period of time for the ARPA funds, these are COVID dollars. With tenant-based rental assistance, that is the main purpose for these funds. That is its sole purpose, and you can provide assistance for an extended period of time. So I just want to make known that that is the main difference there. And while we do feel the need for this program, I'd also like to state, I was on a phone call just yesterday with an individual who can't afford to pay rent in Henry County, and I just kind of said, in a couple months, we'll be able to do a little bit more to help this household. But specifically, given the rising costs in rent in our community, we find many individuals on a weekly basis who just can't afford the rent. Now, if I can go back to down payment assistance. We have been in communication with local banks in the area. We like to go through a process with identifying those banks, certifying them, developing policies and procedures for how we will work with those banks, receive applications for, from eligible or interested home buyers, let me state it that way. How we'll process and review applications from interested home buyers, and then how that down payment assistance would be administered. Now, we will look to administer it on the surface, similar to how we do the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. That program also includes down payment assistance, and it will be very similar to that. The big difference with the down payment assistance program, individual households won't be limited to the selection of homes as they are within SP. Individuals would have, they will be able to look at homes on the open market as they would if they were not receiving any down payment assistance. There would be a cap on the cost of homes, and we would proceed with that within the guidelines of the program. But that would be the main difference in a program that we currently do not have for the county. But we will look to work with banks, similar to what the Georgia Department of Community Affairs does. We'll have a list of approved banks that individuals can go through.
What I tend to find is that with this rental assistance, you have a lot of individuals that are renting that when it's time to renew their lease, the, they're going up on the rent a hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars. And, and if you're on a fixed income or you work in a minimum wage job, that makes a hundred dollars could make a difference of whether you can stay in your apartment or rental property or whatever. And so, thank you, Shannon, for that. Any other questions?
Yes, very much on the line of what you've just stated, Madam Chair, is that our citizens are finding themselves, when we help them, that the, the leases are now going up extensively beyond what we've helped them with and put them right back in a bad situation. And my question is, is there any type of agreement that we can have that simply say that we're helping Mary Ann Sue out with six months of such and such and so? With an agreement that you would maintain this lease amount for six months of such and such and so? To allow that person to get ahead, that's what I'm saying.
That is something that I could look in-
I don't know if it's possible.
That is something that we could look into. I would also ask the county attorney for any guidance and advice on that as to the legalities of it. But please also keep in mind, with our programs, Henry County is not directly in contact with the tenant or the landlord. with our programs, Henry County is not directly in contact with the tenant or the landlord. We're working through the nonprofits. So we will also have to have that discussion with them. And honestly, Commissioner, I'll start by just asking if that's something that they already have in place that I just may not be aware of, but I'll follow up with you.
Find out. We don't want to, I met a young lady yesterday with one child. She said, I'm paying fifteen hundred dollars for one bedroom. She said, I don't know what I'm gonna do. I said, for one bedroom? And this is not in an exclusive place. It's a, um, it, it's a place, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, if we are going to be of assistance, hopefully to move people to a better place, we need to find a way to give them an opportunity to rebuild. I'm not trying to just give away stuff, but just an agreement that we will help them this step. An opportunity to rebuild, so they can absorb the new costs. That's what I'm seeing, if we can start looking at that. And one other thing, and if you were looking at, I would appreciate that. One other thing, I noticed on administrative costs, you have fifty-one thousand plus. Are you hiring an additional person? Will you be looking at consultants? Are you, how are you going to use that money to cover administrative costs? Will they be outside people or what?
So, at this time, we learned of the HUD program after the approval of the most current budget. That, a new staff person may be something that we come back before the board with in the new budget or at mid-year perhaps. I haven't spoken with our Financial Services Director on that just yet. Um, but if we do, we would definitely have the funds available in the grant to cover that cost. At this time, we're just developing policies and procedures. We're working in the community to identify those partners and also contacting surrounding jurisdictions who've had these funds much longer. So right now, we're learning the program. Uh, but this is definitely how we look to move forward with it, once we get those things in place.
And would you also look into this program to see if it would allow you to have funds set aside for emergency vouchers to help house people as well?
We can do that.
So if that's the case, we may need to see if there's some way to move some dollars around, around if we get these phone calls for emergencies to house people in um different extended state places or something of that nature.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that. And I also mentioned, for us, there is an amendment process, but we've brought amendments before you all previously, uh, multiple times. So that's not a problem at all. We could definitely go through the process of adding additional activities as those needs arise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Clemens?
So, a couple of things. Um, I'll start with the last thing that Commissioner Thomas left off with. Uh, we looked at the tenant-based rental assistance program and the other funds that we already have, which is millions that we have over there. And I'm still trying to justify having the one hundred and eleven thousand in rental on this side and having the other rental funds that we have and not addressing the homelessness. So I know that part of this um funds we could use for the homelessness. So I would like to see the tenants-based rental assistance be more for homeless individuals instead of the tenant-based rental, because we have tenant-based rental. Or just tell me the difference in this rental and the rentals that we have in the emergency funds, and why do we need both?
Yes, ma'am. So specifically, the emergency funds are in response to COVID. So households have to have been impacted negatively by COVID. And for the Community Development Block Grant Program, they have to be able to provide that information. Um, we run into a lot of situations where individuals are, are in need of help, but they haven't had COVID, they haven't lost their jobs to COVID. It's just due to the high cost in rent.
That's fair, thank you. That's what I needed to know.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and can we create the line for the homeless? I would like to see that Henry County is doing something for the homeless population, and I would like to take a portion of that one-eleven-five-ninety-six and specifically make it for homelessness.
Yes, ma'am. If you all would allow me, our plan has to be in by the tenth. Can I bring that back as an amendment, just to ensure that we do not miss our deadline?
Yes, can we, uh, agree to?
So can we do tenant-based rental slash homelessness?
So, let me hear clearly. You all are directing me to add it at this time.
Just, just, just a homeless, uh, just a slash homeless or whatever. That way, we can use it for either or, right?
Yes, ma'am. So that I don't have to bring anything back, please state for me very clearly, how much do you all want to see?
I would like to make a motion to allow, uh, Shannon to add a separate line at her discretion of what that amount needs to be for our homeless population, so that we have something specific saying that this county is now addressing the homelessness population in Henry County.
Correct. And then the other thing, Shannon, also, what, uh, these nonprofits, as you start finding who your partners will be in this, it would be good if they could have a resource so that these individuals that are receiving this funding could maybe also have an opportunity to look at um other job opportunities or job changes that could get them to the level of being able to afford the rents. Because if you're working a certain job, maybe you might, maybe you might need some job training to go into another area. And then that way, we could, that, that can help those residents be, have a sustainable income to be able to afford the rents. So I'd like to see the partnerships that we do with the nonprofits, that they have some support resources to help them to be sustainable.
Yes, ma'am, those wraparound services. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then the other part was, uh, the cap for the housing. Um, I know that under the down payment assistance, um, there is a cap of the amount that the house has to be or can't be. Um, I don't know how much say-so you would have in that. I would love to see the policy on that later. Um, because the housing market in Henry County is, is three hundred thousand and up. And so, I don't want two hundred and fifty thousand to be sitting there because we don't have houses that meet that requirement. And that happens a lot in jurisdictions as we've looked at what's happening around us with this, um, program. Please make sure, find out what the, what the, um, you know, the agreement is, what the sources are to make sure that people can buy, even if it's a five hundred thousand dollar home or three hundred thousand dollar home. If they need those funds and they qualify, then it should be limited to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, because you might not find that in Henry County.
Understood, yes, ma'am.
Um, and the administration, under the DPA, is any of that two fifty in admin or is it all to citizens? All to those who qualify for the program?
That is to qualify individuals for the program. So with two hundred and fifty thousand, I was thinking a cap at twenty-five thousand. So if I'm doing my math right, that will allow us to assist up to ten households, unless households need less than the twenty-five thousand. So our administrative cost is, is gonna be anything that is needed towards the administration of the program.
Not out of the two fifty?
Not out of the two fifty.
Perfect.
Good?
What I'm hearing from the board is that you all really want to invest some funds in homelessness. As a reminder to the board, we do have ARPA funds, and it is a much larger pot of money. If, if the desire is for Shannon to keep moving on what she's moving, since her pot is so limited. If you all would like for us to bring back a resolution to allocate some ARPA funds for homelessness, that's an option as well.
So, thank you, Chair. Well, so with the CDBG funds, it's ongoing. Once Shannon puts this, this program, once you set this program up for that, it's, it's ongoing. It's something that we've not done, and a lot of the counties have the homelessness stuff in there, but we've never had this program. So as Shannon establishes this new program, I think it's good to establish that the county has a consistent home. That's the question that we get from citizens all the time. What is the county doing about homelessness? This puts this in place, and it keeps us longevity. And so, yeah, the ARPA funds can be used, but right now, Shannon, uh, the chair has agreed that Shannon can go ahead and put it into this. So I don't think we should wait. I think we should let her roll with it, if the board, if that's the board's will.
And so, the amendment would be, if I can get a motion to, um, um, with regards to adding the homeless to the rental assistance piece, that way Shannon, you can keep it moving and you don't have to come back before us.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Well, we will look at specifically emergency shelter vouchers.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Perfect. Move to approve.
Okay, got a motion? Got a second? No further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have DOT. Um, wait, hold up, hold, hold up. Is it a public hearing?
No, Shannon has an additional item.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No worries, Chair, thank you. We do also have before you all a resolution, um, delegating the role of certifying offers and he rolls legal administrator of the HUD programs. This is for the environmental review requirements. Um, process to myself as your Director of Community Development. What this means is that I have the responsibility for reviewing the environmental reviews that are processed by staff. In reviewing those, I am to ensure that we are meeting our compliance requirements and our federal mandates. Um, that also means that I have the responsibility to potentially speak before a federal judge if any of these reviews are called into question legally.
Okay. Y'all, can I get a motion? Okay, get a second? No discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so now, next is DOT.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning, Board.
Now, this is a public hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, this is for the Board to consider approving abandonment of portion of Commerce Drive Right-of-Way. On April twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-two, DOT received a request to abandon and declare surplus in existing portion of Commerce Drive Right-of-Way as shown on the attached plat. And more particularly, shown on the attached plat and legal description in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and nineteen square feet, which is equivalent to zero point five four nine acres. The abandonment and declaration of surplus property is necessary to combine property owned by the applicant for development of the site. And the area requested to be abandoned and declared surplus has not been used by the public to the extent that any public purpose is served by it. And the applicant owner developer is aware of utilities located within the existing right-of-way and understands these utilities will remain in place. And I do have a, kind of an add-on. Uh, we sent out letters to, uh, the adjoining property owners, and one of them's Vulcan Materials, and Vulcan has property downstream of this area. And, uh, so I've added that the applicant owner developer understands they'll provide access through what's currently existing right-of-way to Vulcan Materials for maintenance and testing activities.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Um, if anyone would like to come and speak on this topic, you have three minutes. Anyone like to come and speak? Okay, hearing done. Uh, this concludes our public hearing. I'd like to call for a motion. This to four.
Motion to approve.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, you have a resolution for county? Surplus, is that this different one?
It's the same property. Um, now, basically, there is the map of the area being abandoned. You can see Vulcan's property to the west. Uh, the blue shaded area is the area in question we just abandoned. And this item is to sell. Uh, so on this one. And on this one, I need to add something to the, uh, to the resolution, so let's make sure, hopefully I'll do that, so. All right, so on the previous, uh, board item, uh, the, you heard the abandonment and declaration of surplus property for Commerce Drive Right-of-Way. And it's further shown as highlighted as Exhibit A, which there's Exhibit A, and I've kind of shaded in red the area. Um, with that being approved, this request is to authorize sale of the declared surplus property as shown on Exhibit A per OCGA thirty-two dash seven-three, seven dash three and thirty-two dash seven dash four. The area in question available to be disposed of is the same twenty-three thousand nine hundred and nineteen square feet, uh, which is zero point five four nine acres, and it's highlighted on the attached plat marked Exhibit A. And the applicant owner has been made aware that the utilities that exist are to remain in place. And I'm add then, as well as provide access for maintenance purposes to parcel zero-six-eight-D-zero-four-zero-one-six-thousand, which is Vulcan Materials' property. And on your resolution, I've basically added a, uh, fourth whereas that would state, whereas access, access shall be granted to parcel number zero-six-eight-D-zero-four-zero-one-six-thousand for the purpose of testing wells and water vaults or other maintenance-related purposes. And also to go along with that, in the now therefore be it resolved portion of the resolution, under number two, uh, it reads dispersment of the property is to be per OCGA thirty-two dash seven dash four, and the county attorney is directed to prepare a quick claim deed conveying title to said property. Included that the title conveyance is made subject to any utilities existing on the property at the time of the transfer. And my add-on is, uh, comma, as well as access to be provided to parcel number zero-six-eight-D-zero-four-zero-one-six-thousand for the purpose of testing wells and/or water vaults or other maintenance-related purposes. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, so have you got this add-on to the clerk? Clerk, do you have this add-on?
Yes, I emailed her, uh, kind of a markup in PDF.
All right. Uh, any questions? Okay, can we get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, can get a second?
Second.
Okay, got a second? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have Public Safety Henry Fire Rescue.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members. This morning, you have in front of you a resolution for the emergency purchase of one two thousand and twenty-two F-five-fifty diesel four-by-two Braun demo ambulance from ten-eight in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, two two thousand and twenty-two Dodge forty-five-hundred chassis from Reliant Emergency Specialist in the amount of a hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars, and one two thousand and twenty-two Dodge Ram forty-five-hundred chassis remount from Reliant Emergency Specialties in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars, totaling five hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars for the Henry County Fire Rescue Department. Funding is available under the Capital Improvement Plan. I would like to make a note, um, that since this resolution was written and turned in, uh, there needs to be a slight amendment made to this, uh, should you take action on it today, as one of these vehicles has already been sold after the resolution was written. Uh, I would like to remove the one two thousand and twenty-two F-two, uh, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-two Ford F-five-fifty diesel four-by-two Braun demo ambulance from ten-eight in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four. Uh, with that being said, that would bring our total down to two hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Okay, Chief, what, what are these for? Can you tell me, explain?
Yes, ma'am. So, if you remember back in September of two thousand and twenty-one, the board approved us, uh, for the purchase of six ambulances to replace our fleet. Currently, our ambulances average about thirty-five thousand miles per year. Uh, and the six ambulances that we, uh, that we bought back in September of two thousand and twenty-one still have not arrived to us yet. They're still being, uh, still being built. Uh, so with these ambulances here, uh, we're, we're uh, we're expecting to be able to get these in the next couple of months, and that will, uh, greatly, uh, give us a little bit of relief from the fleet that we have that's continuing to age. Uh, currently, we have about, uh, we have twenty ambulances on hand. We have nineteen that we run frontline, or excuse me, fourteen that we run frontline every day and five reserve ambulances. Out of the ones that we run a frontline every day, uh, I think nine of those have over a hundred and sixty-five thousand miles on them, uh, currently. So what these ambulances are, uh, are just to replace some of those older ones that are in the fleet and try to get us back to a comfortable spot where we're not having to possibly shut down ambulances in the future.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner.
I wanted to ask, is this one of the programs that we were considering doing some form of lease purchase on? Or is this one of the programs we're looking at just to completely buy the vehicles?
These, these vehicles would be bought outright. Um, the way that an ambulance works is an ambulance is actually two separate pieces. You have the box on the back of the ambulance and then you have the cab chassis. Cab chassis, think of it as a pickup truck without the bed on it. That's the cab. And then you take the box of the ambulance and you mount it to the back of that. The box on the ambulance can be pulled off of that cab chassis and put on different cab chassis in the future as we continue to move forward. That's the return on investment that the Board has made several years ago with moving towards the Braun ambulances that we have in our fleet. Those boxes can be picked up and remounted several times. Some of the ambulances that we've bought in the past, you're not able to do that. So with being able to secure a couple of cab chassis, it allows us to go ahead and take the boxes off of some of our older ones and put it on newer cab chassis, basically giving us a brand-new ambulance to the fleet.
Commissioner, I was opposed across this for remount. Since chassis are purchased, how long would it take to get these remounts back on, uh, frontline?
What we're expecting is about a sixty-to-ninety-day turnaround once the chassis have arrived on-site at the Reliant location.
Alright, thank you.
My, my, the other part of my question was, is that you said you're still waiting for, uh, some orders you placed in two thousand and twenty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
And my, so if we're replacing some of these on a temporary basis, I guess, until they come in?
No, ma'am, these will still be current ones to the fleet. I have, I have some information that actually outlines specifically what our ambulances are. So the six that was purchased in twenty of twenty-one are going to replace, uh, two thousand and fifteen ambulance, a two thousand and seventeen ambulance, a two thousand and sixteen, a two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and sixteen, and a two thousand and sixteen, all of which have a hundred and seventy-two thousand, a hundred and ninety thousand, a hundred and eighty-three thousand, a hundred and fifty-four, a hundred and eighty-three, and a hundred and seventy-one. That still leaves us with ambulances that have a hundred and thirty-four, a hundred and eight, a hundred and fifty-one, a hundred and fifty-one, a hundred and fifty-one, and a hundred and twenty-four. So these three ambulances, we're just gonna go to help relieve those higher-numbered ambulances outside of the six that are already slated, uh, to arrive sometime, hopefully by the end of this year.
So are you putting in orders now for upcoming fire stations that are slated to be, uh, built? Because you're telling me there's a huge delay in you getting your trucks. So my question would be, are you now also going to put in orders for those stations? Or we're gonna have stations with no trucks?
Yes, ma'am. Just, just like has been mentioned before in the board meetings, the, the average time to build an ambulance currently runs about, uh, eighteen to, to twenty months. The average time to build a fire truck runs anywhere between twenty, uh, and thirty months, and the same with the ladder truck as well. We're working on a master, uh, apparatus plan to bring back before the Board at a future date with a total apparatus that is needed in the fire department currently as it stands. That plan will include the stations seventeen and eighteen, the station slated for the Ola area, the station slated for the, the Stockbridge-McDonna area. It will include the apparatus for both of those stations and the apparatus that's needed to replace in the current fleet that we have due to the extended build time. So yes, ma'am.
And the, the trucks that you'll be rotating out, are you selling those as salvage? Are they going to gov.deal? What, what are you doing with those trucks?
Most of the time they go to the gov.deals. Uh, we try to look at one or two of those that we have. So I said, I said that we have, we own twenty ambulances at a county, but we have nineteen provider licenses. One of those ambulances that we own doesn't have an actual license associated to it because it's given to the Training Division for training our new employees that we're bringing on board. So they will either go to surplus, or we will keep one or two in the fleet specifically as assigned to the Training Division to train those new employees as they come through.
Well, I look forward to your master plan because as you're stating, if it's taking you twenty, twenty-four months to rebuild your fleet, we definitely need to look at a master plan going forward so we can match that with the building process of the new stations. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, can I get a motion?
Got a motion second? Got a second? Any further discussion? Having none? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Board.
Hey, planning and zoning resolution to repeal nineteen dash forty.
Madam Chair, Vice President, and other mem- and remaining members of the Board. So in, uh, May of two thousand and twenty, May of, during a May two thousand and twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting, Commissioner Clemmons brought up, um, that it was her belief that there wasn't, uh, a resolution passed that required the impact fees to be, uh, divided up equally among the districts, uh, which would, uh, run afoul of state law. Uh, we did go back and look that there, there is in fact a resolution. So in February the fifth of two thousand and nineteen, the Board of Commissioners did adopt, uh, Resolution, uh, number nineteen dash forty. Uh, in that resolution, there was a breakdown with the impact fee, but there was also a provision within that resolution that required, uh, that the funds from the impact fee, uh, be split equally among the districts. OCGA Section thirty-six dash seventy-one dash four M, uh, does provide that the impact fee can only be spent for the categories of system improvements in the service area in which the project takes place. Um, so, um, that part of the resolution is actually, uh, invalid. And so what this resolution does, it basically repeals that portion of the resolution and, um, imposes the collection ex- uh, expenditures of the development of impact fees, which, of course, Mr. Kirk will come in after this, after you pass this resolution, and this may become obsolete. So we just want to make sure that, uh, portion regarding the split of the, uh, split equally among the districts is removed. So, are there any questions?
No, I, I know, okay.
Can we get our money back in our districts where the money was taken out of?
Well, my understanding is that the staff knew from the start.
They never took it out.
Okay, good.
Because you all acted on it, you were advised to act on it, we took other steps. So we did it the right way.
Alright.
So y'all follow state law.
So no money's due back. Yes, ma'am, we follow the law.
Alright, alright. So, can we get a motion?
Move to approve.
Got a motion sec- second, okay. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay? Resolution approving impact fee schedule county-wide. Mr. Kirk?
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, uh, Commissioners. Let's get it here. So, before we go into the, the presentation, I want to take a look at, uh, an email that everyone should have received from Mr. Gary Wiley with the Atlanta Home Builders Association. Um, that included Dr. Nelson's, I guess, purview of, uh, the impact fees, a study that we've done from the University of Arizona. Just as a reminder, we hired Mr. Bill Ross from Ross and Associates sometime in July of last year, um, to conduct a study. And, uh, the good thing, I guess, you could say about that was that Mr. Bill Ross and his company were the original, 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 um, company that did the presentation back in two thousand and three, where we implemented impact fees, uh, as a whole for the county. If you will, let me find this. Okay, yeah. So, um, as you look at the, the email that was sent, um, I'm gonna address each of the line items. I'm gonna try to do this as quickly as possible. So, um, with the email that was received, uh, Dr. Nelson, uh, identified that funds collected in library, animal control, and emergency communication impact fees may or not have been spent, uh, to remedy deficiencies, which be a, which will be a violation, uh, of DIFRA, which is Development Impact Fee Act. And so, a couple of things there. You can see Mr. Bill Ross did send a response. I think you have that on your, on the dais as well. Basically, there's no money that has been categorized or, or identified as being improperly spent. So each year, the county does a CIE update, Capital Improvement Element update, to the county, or to the state, uh, to DCA. And I would think that at some point, they would have recognized if we were doing something improper, that they would have notified of us of that discrepancy. Um, again, approximately one point seven million, uh, in updated emergency communication facilities would be financed in part by new growth and development, but without proper credit pursuant to DIFRA requirements. Again, um, that's not identified in the methodology report. Um, all of the emergency communication facilities are a hundred percent impact fee eligible, and, uh, the credit, there will be a hundred percent credit deducted for impact fee, uh, funds on hand. And so, uh, Mr. Bill Ross is here too to add further context to any of these, uh, these items. Um, again, the updated green space fee, impact fee appears to be in violation of DIFRA. Um, trails in green space areas have been recognized by, uh, Department of Community Affairs as impact fee eligible and related facilities to parks and recreation facilities specified in the, uh, in the Development Impact Fee Act. Here, we talk about transportation. Uh, the category of transportation facilities appears to be in violation, uh, as Dr. Nelson has identified, lack in analysis of the capacity added to serve new growth and development being used, uh, for resurfacing which remedies deficiencies for which impact fees are not allowed, and lack in authority because, um, they are a new category of impact fees for which, uh, engagement for impact fee advisory committee. So, um, again, if you look at the trip generation calculation in Appendix D of the methodology report, uh, determines that the traffic in twenty to forty-five generated by new growth and development represent forty-two percent of all trips in the county. Um, these roads, improvement projects listed in the methodology report are those that create additional capacity, not resurfacing and maintenance, um, projects. Uh, they were actually excluded, uh, from the report. Uh, the table does also show that, uh, the credit provided from future T-Spot collections, which new growth and development will be generating in the future, thus reducing the new growth to, then, reducing the cost to new growth and development accordingly. Um, again, you're looking at, uh, the observation of Dr. Nelson, his interpretation of the requirement that an impact fee advisory committee be commit, be created before a new fee category can be adopted. So the observation here is that, um, if you look at the State Act, prior to the adoption of a development impact fee ordinance, a municipality or county adopting an impact fee ordinance shall establish a development impact fee advisory committee. And so, we did that back in two thousand and three. Again, at the bottom there, you see, um, the two thousand and three capital improvement elements have no relevance on the current update of the, uh, county's impact fees. Um, the Board, last year, November thirty of two thousand and twenty-one, uh, did update the CIE report, uh, replacing the previous CIE. And just to, just to reiterate, in the middle there, where it talks about the state law, uh, which was adopted forty years ago, again, the adoption of the county's first impact fee ordinance is where you would have that advisory committee. And that's all I have for, for that. Uh, do you have any questions?
You have more in your presentation?
Yeah, I've got a different set of presentations, ma'am.
You have questions on this here? He's, he's got additional.
None, Chief.
Alright, go ahead.
Next, okay. Alright, so, uh, moving into the, the presentation. Um, again, uh, we started this process, um, almost a year ago, or probably over a year ago. The idea was to update the fees and to add transportation as a category. And again, we hired Mr. Bill Ross with Ross and Associates. And we, we did have conversations with the different, uh, associations, um, in the past, and they provided their insight on the, uh, this process. Again, impact fee projects, you're looking at parks and rec, public safety, transportation, uh, for new capital items, facilities, things of that nature. Is basically dealing with growth, not, uh, maintenance. Again, here it says, can I be used to pay for general operation or maintenance of facilities that are currently existing? And this is the, uh, proposed impact fee. I think at one point, uh, not quite sure, a couple of months ago, we settled on the thirty-five forty-four, uh, fee. That's outlined there. So questions were asked to show how it would impact the buyer. Now, the existing fee is sixteen sixty-one. The new fee is gonna be thirty-five forty-four. And once it's all said and done, you're basically looking at a hundred and eighteen dollars a year difference from the existing fee to the new fee, which is about nine dollars eighty-six cents a month. And so, how does it affect commercial and industrial facilities? So if you look at the square footages, these are projects that we actually have, uh, that have been constructed. And you see the existing fee, uh, anywhere from a warehouse shop-type facility from fifteen ninety-six to a manufacturing facility, um, that paid a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in impact fees. But when you go to the new proposed fee, the numbers are considerably different. Um, the shop maintains pretty steady at twenty-two hundred dollars. But when you look at manufacturing facilities, that number becomes one point five million dollars, impact fee. Now, that is on the evaluation of an eighty-million-dollar building. So that one point five million dollars is roughly one point, I think, six or seven percent of the overall cost for that facility. And I, I guess, let me go back for a second. So, I guess you could say for the last eighteen years or so, we've kind of, uh, been grossly underpaid, if you will, if you look at these numbers. And so, what, what were the considerations? So one consideration that, uh, proposed was a six-month grace period, uh, for all planted and recorded lots. Um, there's also been a consideration of it to basically adopt an impact fee, make it, uh, active immediately. And of course, the council quality growth asked for a one-year grace, and so did the Home Builders Association. And so, just, just in summary, um, we are recommending the thirty-five forty-four. Uh, we are asking, uh, staff is asking for a six-month grace period for planted and recorded lots. Those fees will go into effect roughly February second of twenty-three. It's kind of hidden behind the thing there. And then all impact fees are, of course, are paid prior to, um, CO. Uh, one thing I do want to point out is that the grace period will cost us roughly a million dollars. Um, we did, we actually looked at, uh, um, permits that were from, I think, Ju- um, June one to December of last year. This is kind of off by a couple of months, but, uh, it was about a hundred million dollar difference. So you're looking at, uh, I think we collected one point one million, and the new fee was like two point three million. And that's all I have.
Can you go back to the slide that gives the options?
The options, yeah.
Right here.
Okay.
Okay. Just leave that, leave that up. I had a... So if, if, if we wait the six-month grace period, we would lose over a million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
In impact fees?
Yes, ma'am.
That could go to... That could go to much-needed impact with all this building that's going on all over the county?
Yes, ma'am. Good answer, yes.
Alright, I'll just, just leave that there. I just want that to sit. Commissioner Thomas, I know you had some question.
My question was, well, let me say before I get started. When I received the email that I received from the company that was questioning, uh, our use of our impact fees and how we use them, it was very insulting to me as a commissioner on this board. And apparently, I'm assuming that was a professional company that should have done their homework a little bit better before sending us allegations or questioning about how we spend our impact fees. If Henry County does nothing else well, when it comes down to money, we have a finance department that finds every penny. Even when I question them about that penny, they find it. So, I will say initially, Madam Chair, I'm sorry to sound a little disrespectful, but when you send us something like that and you're questioning the fact that we have not increased our impact fees in years, and then send us something insulting, it is not in your best interest. Now, let me go forward. You stated on here, if we waited six months, it would cost us dearly a million dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say six months, are you talking about for the people who have projects in now or for the people who will be submitting projects from now through December? Where's that cutoff?
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, anyone that submits a permit for a permit up until December, and this is only for logs that are being planted and recorded, so that's...
I'm sorry, didn't hear.
It's only for those, um, parcels that have already been planted and recorded. So if you're just in the preliminary phase of a project, you can't come bring 200 permits to try to get in before the deadline.
That's what I was concerned about. People coming and trying to inundate us and just bring in things before, um, that deadline. So you won't allow that to happen.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
That makes more work for us.
So, I guess what, what, what my concern is, is that if we vote on this resolution today, if this is approved, why are we waiting six months? Why is it not immediate?
So, i- it can be. Uh, that was just a recommendation from staff. Uh, if you choose to do it immediately, that, we can make that happen.
I mean, we're being impacted every day, and so, um, I just... Oh, Commissioner Wilson?
I agree with Chair. We've been impacted every day. This million dollars can go a long way in the parks and rec, the public safety force, and of course, all the other areas where I, uh, where the transportation libraries. So I don't think we need to leave a million dollars on the table. The developers, the builders have been knowing about this the last couple of years, knowing that this was coming. And we're not asking for the full, for the 400%, we're only asking for the, to get us caught back up to where we should be from the 18 years we did not increase these. So I'm not in favor for the six-month grace period.
Commissioner Clemens?
I would just say that, um, staff has done a great job. I like staff's recommendation as well as, we do get money when people build in Henry County. We still get impact fees. We still get tax dollars. When things sit as rural and it never is built on, then we have less of taxes collected on that. But when people build on it, it increases our tax collection. So I think that you all did a good job of showing Henry County to be friendly. Quality growth has been a, a great partner for this county for years. We go to their stuff. We support them, and they say one year. So I think to come at least halfway is what you guys tried to do, uh, to some, by saying a six-month grace period, because they have been, um, making sure that we have quality. So that's what it's about. It's about quality growth, not no growth.
Yes, ma'am.
So I wanna say that, um, to the, um, industries that are concerned about this impact, you know, we may not have the majority to do what you ask, but we will support and at least try to come halfway, uh, with you.
Any other discussions? Okay, so I'll call for a motion.
Um, Chair Horell, I would like to, um, support and ask that we agree to staff's recommendation.
And the recommendation being?
Their recommendation is six months. Is that correct, Tucson?
Yes, ma'am.
So it would be the first column?
Correct.
First column on your chart?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm asking the question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll give it a second, Chair. My question is, does your six-month grace period include the statement I made by no rushing in a permit to add before that grace period?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that language included in here properly is my question?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so we have in the resolution, or in the ordinance, that, um, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The resolution actually states that the, um, that the resolution will take effect on February the 2nd of 2023, which would be a little bit less than, uh, six months. I just wanna make clear that it would be effective February the 2nd of 2023. Is that accurate?
And also, it says that land has to already be planted and recorded.
Yes, ma'am.
So new people coming in trying to rush, it doesn't work for them, because this is for, this grace period is only for people who've already started. They've already got it planted. They've already, and that's fair. Someone who's already indebted in this county, have already bought their land, they planted it, uh, they've recorded the lots, they should be, they, they need that grace period, 'cause that's like, they, they didn't, they didn't, um, plan for that.
That's what, that's what it says in the ordinance, exactly what you said.
So that's, that's the reason that I'm supporting the six-month, because you have planted and recorded lots. This is not for new.
So I think that answers your question, Commissioner Thomas, is that it is for planted and recorded lots?
Thank you. So I do set the motion.
And, and, uh, to go further, um, it also talks about commencement of work. So you have to actually have a foundation in the ground before you can actually, um, get that fee waived.
So, we got a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. All in favor? Motion care, oh, I'll, I'll oppose. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
We need an ordinance. I'm, I'm sorry.
I need to get clarification on what the board voted on, because what we have is two columns, so we need to reference.
Okay, so...
Specifically in the resolution, it doesn't call any of that out. So can we just say now, therefore be it, so we'll have a clear record, please?
So, read your resolution.
So, um, the motion is that we would accept staff's recommendation of the first column of the grace period being six-month grace period. Does that clarify it, Sherri?
Yes, ma'am, because we have two columns, and I just wanna make sure we're going with column one.
Staff's, first column one of six-months grace period.
Got it. Okay, I'm clear. And then everything else under there, the grace applicable grandfather phasing and the collected.
Right. So no one is grandfathered in. If you hadn't started, it does not apply to you.
So, yes, in the ordinance, it does outline grandfather for that, for the, uh, to what you're saying.
Yes, right, for the people that's here. Right, okay.
So we'll, we're gonna need to redo this resolution, because if you look at the whereas, and then it references Section 8.06.02, we need to take that out and incorporate column one. So we'll get that corrected, but I wanna make sure just for those that may be watching, the, the recommendation is not gonna be what was posted in the package.
What we're talking about was, it's in column one. That was Commissioner Clemens' recommendation, column one.
Right, and then just for further clarification, impact fees will now be paid prior to the CO being issued.
That's always been the case, hasn't it?
No, ma'am. So we, remember several years back, maybe before, maybe Commissioner Holmes was the only one on the board, the board passed a resolution that impact fees would be paid at the time that the CO, um, is issued. So this says it has to be paid prior to, which means when they come in to pull their permit, they will pay the impact fee.
What's the difference in any of what it is? Talk, say something about that.
Right, so the intent was to continue what we already had in place. So they pay it before we issue a CO. So when I say prior to, meaning if they come in today for a CO, they gotta pay the impact fee?
They pay the impact fee at the same time.
So impact fees shall be paid at the time that the CO is issued, not prior to.
Okay.
Got it, okay.
I'll work on my, my...
Sorry for interrupting, but I just, clarification. Thank you.
Alright.
So those changes will be made, and then, um, are we, do we need to bring it back, Nancy, or is that?
No, um, you can go forward.
Yeah, yeah, as long as we're going for what has been stated.
Yes, ma'am. We can take care of it. Not a problem.
Okay, alright. Did you have a ordinance amendment as well?
We did. Actually, that's kinda what we were just talking about.
Okay, so that would amend that ordinance?
Correct.
So is that a separate resolution?
Do we need twice?
It needs to be separate.
Okay, alright. So the, basically, the first resolution was for impact fees, period, 3544.
And then the second resolution is for the implementation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then, so, uh, we need to get a motion for that?
Yes.
So, so the second resolution is to amend the current impact fee ordinance?
Okay.
So you set the fee in the, the one that you just did. So I think Commissioner Clemens may have to go back and just say, we approve it at the rate of 3,000, whatever that number is. That's the first one.
Okay.
And it's 46 cents.
Thank you.
So this is the resolution that we're approving for the ordinance change?
Right.
Really?
Yeah.
So, um, Chair Horell, I move to approve that we, um, change our county ordinance with the new impact fee summary being recommended at $3,544 with a six-month grace period for planted and recorded lots.
And 46 cents.
And 40, yeah, I know. $3,544 and?
46 cents.
46 cents.
Okay, so can we get a second? So get a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, uh, all in favor of changing the ordinance? Okay, those opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, ma'am. And Chair Horell is, I hate to keep interrupting.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
Two things. Don't forget we...
I know two, I know two things, okay. Let's get...
Purchasing bags?
The purchasing bag to talk about that.
Janitorial cleaning?
Janitorial, that we move to the regular janitor.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. The request you have before you this morning is a resolution authorizing the award of RFQ 2234 for janitorial services to American Facility Services of Alpharetta. RFQ 2234 was posted on Team Georgia Marketplace GLGA and on the county website. Nine vendors submitted proposals. An evaluation committee was formed. Proposals were scored and ranked. Four vendors were recommended to continue to the bidding phase. Three vendors submitted bids. The recommendation is to American Facility Services as the overall low in the amount of 560,340 as an annual contract for one year with two mutually agreed annual renewals.
Okay, so let me make sure I, I understand what you said. You said it was nine that submitted applications?
Submitted proposals, yes, ma'am.
And of the nine, four?
Were recommended to move forward into the bidding. Four were recommended, but only three submitted a bid.
Only three submitted a bid, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Uh, Commissioner Holmes?
How much is the current contract, the person we've been paying for the last, um, year?
314,520 dollars.
Okay.
Alright, Commissioner Thomas, I think you had a question.
Yes, I did. She said, nine submitted, four recommended, and three bidding. Can you give us some type of, uh, idea of what that mix of bidders were? Were there any veterans, any females, any disparate, um, companies? Can you give us a mixture of what it was?
Okay, it did not include the vendors who were not chosen to move forward. But of the vendors that were chosen to move forward, two of the vendors were small businesses, Asian-American and/or African-American, female-owned or veteran. One of the vendors was, none of these apply.
Okay, and thank you for doing that, because we are constantly asked that question. And I have so many people say, we can't do business with Henry County. And I want to have a definitive answer to say, we do have bidders out there, and we do have a process that we choose that's equitable for everyone, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, once this diversity study is completed and finished, then these are things that we can make as part of our packet, correct?
Correct, if there's a disparity found in...
But until, until we get that done, because we delayed in doing a disparity study, then, you know, um, w- we are where we are. And so, um, what, what three, uh, you said it was three companies that bid it, and then the one that's recommended is the one that, that scored the highest?
Bid the lowest.
Bid the lowest?
Bid the lowest, yes.
So it was based on lowest bid?
Yes, ma'am, correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I just, for clarification, um, there's been a lot of, uh, comments about we delayed the thing, but we have something in place in this county called local vendors. And it, if you're a local vendor, you get an extra point. You get points, not one point. You get several points if you're a local vendor, just for being a local vendor. And whenever the disparity comes down to race, it does not come down to veteran owns. It does not come down to female owned. It comes down to race. So even though we don't have anything in place to, we have something in place to give credit for local vendors, but we don't have anything to give, um, in points in place, and I think David and I have discussed this before, for women-owned, a veteran-owned, but that is something that the board can do without having a disparity study, because disparity is based on race. I just wanna put that out there. So I always make the recommendation based on what we can do, not what is, it's not illegal to do it based on points, because we do it all the time for local vendors.
So let me say this.
So this is, this doesn't apply to...
Did we have a local vendor that was in the top three for lowest bid? Did we have a local vendor?
We did not. Well, we did. I take that back. We had one out of Stopbridge, Georgia. But they were, were not, I don't believe that was one of the ones that was recommended to me for.
So they were not one of the ones recommended?
But for clarification, the local vendor privilege, privilege does not give points. It gives the local vendor opportunity to match the out-of-county vendor if they are within 5% of the low bid. That doesn't even apply to bids that are over $100,000.
Correct, it's 50,000. Okay. What is the, what is the threshold on that?
Currently, it's 100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we have a... So when you send out the package, it does have the opportunity for people to identify themselves as veteran and women and so on and so forth?
Yes, ma'am. In every bad bid package, we include a supplier inclusion program form.
Okay, alright. And the process was properly followed, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright. Alright, so we have a resolution, uh, for the janitorial services?
Have another question.
Yes, uh?
What is the procedure, Sherri, for, uh, extension of the existing company that's there? And did the existing company bid on this?
So Susan will have to tell me if the existing company bided on it, Commissioner, 'cause I have no idea. Did they bid on it, Susan?
The existing vendor did put in a proposal but was not recommended to move forward into the bidding process.
And so, on, with any contract, we can always go back to the vendor and ask them if they're willing to extend it on a month-to-month, um, basis. Now, what that does do is it does not give us the same rate. They can come back and say, hey, we'll do it, but the cost is gonna be increased.
But this is 200,000 more though, right?
It is, but one of the things, and I'll, I'll say this to the board, we've had some issues with the current vendor. And what we'd like to do, and I think there's been several meetings with the vendor to try to correct a lot of the issues, because the majority of the work that they're doing is in the courts. The panel that was a part of looking at the janitorial service, um, at least on the list, three of them were individuals from the courts, um, because that's where we get a lot of the complaints from. So I think that was one of the reasons staff did not recommend that vendor moving forward.
I'd like to ask in this contract, I heard you said two automatic renewals. Is that correct? I'd like to have that part removed.
So Commissioner Thomas, we do that in most all of our contracts, but that does not guarantee it. So there is language in the contract that if after a year or within six months or 12 months, the county has the ability to terminate those contracts. But a lot of times, we try to get the automatic renewal so that we can guarantee price. But a lot of times we try to get the automatic renewal so that we can guarantee prices, so I wouldn't recommend-
Is there any language to allow us to come in if necessary to rebid or find someone else if we need to?
We have the authority to do that, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clemens?
I would like to see if we, for my support, I would like to see that in, after the one year, that it will come back before the board, because the disparity study would be in place at that time, and I think that'll give opportunities at that point for other people that may not have qualified this time around to be able to qualify.
I mean, it is, it is three-year, but it is renewable every year on a mutual basis, so I mean, that, that can be done.
Mutual basis?
Yes, a mutual basis.
So that would not require to come back before the board?
That's correct.
So what Commissioner Clemens is asking is for us to approve, but to add another, therefore be it resolved, that after a year, we bring this back before the board. I don't, I don't know if the vendor will agree to that.
We'd have to reach out to see.
We would need to notify the vendor of that, because obviously they're bidding on it with the understanding that, hey, I'm going to get this year and then I'll have up to two renewables. Now, if we have issues, we address it immediately. The disparity study, I think we're close, one of the things that we've been trying to do is get some more public involvement from those businesses that have been underrepresented. And so our purchasing team is looking to have another meeting in September, again, with, with vendors, contractors that are not represented in our bidding process. But once that study is completed, the board is going to have to take action in terms of amending our purchasing ordinance. And so there's going to be a process that has to be followed for that. So what I would suggest is that you all allow us to at least get this approved. Once the disparity study is completed, if you all see a need based on that study that outlines that we have some clear disparities, then we certainly can bring this back if that's the wishes of the board.
Well, the issue that I have with-
And can y'all, I can barely hear y'all, can-
The issue that I have with it is that there was a thirteen-point difference, a thirteen-point difference in another vendor. And we really don't know what that thirteen-point difference was, but the thir-, the difference that's happening a lot of times is that the people that may fa- because the other three people, as she stated, did meet those other criterias. This is the only one that didn't meet any of the criterias to be a disadvantaged business.
So, but we can't evaluate it on that?
I know, I know, so I'm saying in one year, we would be able to. So people that were not able to get a, get a, work with Henry County this year may have the opportunity next year. Other than that, they got to wait three more years. So even though our disparity comes into play, there are still small hanging fruits to help people build their wealth that are not able to do that because it's not in place.
So could a compromise be that we award the bid, and then in a year, we can reevaluate it, and what we may be able to do is break out instead of awarding it to one company, maybe open it up and reduce the number of buildings now? This company has given us a quote based on all of the facilities, and so they may come back and say, we're not willing to do that. But I think if we make any changes to it now, we're going to need to take it back to the vendor, because they bided on it based on it being this one year with up to two renewable-
I would even be okay if this one vendor worked with one of those minority businesses that's on the list and gave them at least twenty percent or thirty percent of the contract, considering they're getting almost half more than our last vendor.
And, and I hear you.
No, I said we had to talk to them, yeah, but we've got time to ask them.
It's got to be in our policy.
Chairman Harrell, will you let them ask them if they are willing to do that, the vendor, if they're willing to work with the minority?
And then we bring it back on the sixteen, don't, don't we have a meeting on, what's our next meeting?
Sixteenth, August sixteenth.
Can we bring it back on the sixteen? Have those, those things answered and bring it?
So the challenge we have with that is that we don't have a policy that requires that, so if we ask them, it's not really in line with our policy.
They can say no, we know that, they have that right to say no.
David? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to ask you too, on these automatic renewals, do you have a process in place at the end of each year for an evaluation of their performance for that year before it goes automatically over?
They're not automatically renewed, they are mutually renewed. We reach out to, we reach out to the department who has requested this service and ask them, hey, this contract is up for renewal, do you wish to renew? Have you had any problems? And if they wish to renew, that's when we reach out to the vendor and let them know that we would like to renew for an additional year.
So we don't have a process in place. Would I like to see if we can put a process in place for the mutual renewal process? To have an evaluation that's written that we can look at to determine if that mutual agreed renewal is done? Because we don't have anything.
So Commissioner, we do. And we have several contracts.
Explain it to me, because I didn't hear here.
Yes, we do, so what happens for any and every contract that the county has, when it's time for us to renew that contract, every department, and we keep documentation, we don't just do it on, you know, a month or two before that contract's going to expire. If we get complaints, and specifically when it comes to janitorial service, litter pickup, and mowing, those are probably the three biggest contracts that we have in uniforms, that we keep a daily log or record of any issues that we're having with, with those contractors or with those vendors. If we find that there are issues, we call them in and we go through a process, hey, look, we've had a number of issues, your staff isn't replenishing the toilet tissue, or your staff isn't showing up on time. One of the bigger issues we had is that COVID. DPH was requiring special COVID cleaning that had to be done, so we had to make sure that they had the staff trained to do the necessary items that we were requiring. So we do have an internal process where we are checking with the departments, not on a one-year basis, but we're checking with them and they're notifying purchasing if there are issues. If we find that there are issues, we will reach out to the vendor, we give them, we probably have more opportunities than none to correct what those issues are. If we find that we can't get it corrected, then we will allow them to still bid. We don't disqualify them and say, hey, look, you can't submit a bid proposal, but keep in mind, the individuals that are serving on the committee, they know, they've worked with the vendors, and so for them, they're reviewing their activities at that point. If we were to create a formal RIN process for every contract, I would need a staff member that's going to be monitoring that every step of the way. And what we're doing right now works because we are allowing each department to reach out to purchasing and document if we have issues with a vendor. So we, we have a process, it's not in the purchasing RIN policy, but we do have an internal process where we are tracking vendors before we do a renewal. It is not an automatic renewal. When they come in, we look at everything, we evaluate everything, and so there are a number of cases where we have not renewed because we've had issues with those vendors, and it would not have made it to the board, because at that point, we've made a determination that we're not going to renew, and then we rebid it out, and then you all award it to a new contractor or vendor.
Well, Sherri, I understand what you're saying, that you are logging in complaints, you are keeping some type of detailed report. I would like to speak with you later, I don't want to consume more time here. I think the process needs to be updated, and I think the process needs to be automated, and we need to see how we can do that, okay?
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, so where are we?
I could ask to have a conversation with the vendor about our concerns, or we can just bid?
Okay, Johnny, you had a question?
Well, you said where are we at? I'm confused because we've been awarding contracts for all this year. We had one last meeting for a moving company, we did the mowing, facility mowing, then we did the litter pickup, but now this becomes a discussion of awarding this contract. But nobody said anything about the other ones, so I guess I'm confused. Why is this such a, a difference in this one and any other contract we award?
I'll tell you why. This was a renewal, just like this mutual renewal, but this contract was pulled from the vendor that's sitting in place now. And so they, they, just like Sherri, well, is it time for this, is this one, time for this one to be up?
Yes, the contract is set to expire, and so because it went through its process, it was time for us to rebid it out. And the, the existing vendor did submit a package.
Was not allowed to move forward.
Correct, the, the committee reviewed the non-proposals that were submitted and selected for to move forward.
I think anybody that's on the bid list that awarded a contract, if they're not doing what the contract says, we have a right to remove them, correct?
That is correct.
I, I don't understand why we're in this conversation about this particular one and not the other ones.
So that's why- We, we got a resolution, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a second? Okay, no further discussion, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up for public, oh, wait a minute, hold up, I'm sorry. We got one more thing. Stable Chase, can I get staff to come up and make an update on that? As many of you all know, Stable Chase Apartments on Wednesday, the twentieth, lost power, as a lot of areas did in McDonough. But when it was time to restore power, there were some issues at that apartment complex. And so there have been a lot of accusations and this and that, that the county wasn't doing anything and so on and so forth. So Chief, if you all would do a presentation as that we've been involved with this issue pretty much from the time that we were notified.
My understanding, since we were notified and we went out and checked, the code enforcement unit went out and checked and did find several violations, and to date, they've cited twenty-five citations for violations so far, either having to do with units not having AC or it's electrical infrastructure problems that this surge brought, brought to light. To date, my knowledge is, in the beginning, where's ninety-three, half of them have been restored. Stable Chase has also offered portable AC units for those that haven't been restored, or they could go get a hotel where they're putting them up somewhere else.
In regards to the building department at this time, three electrical permits have been issued. We've already performed inspections on building five hundred and building twenty-two hundred, and power was restored by Georgia Power to those buildings. Sometime today, the electrician should be contacting me to perform an inspection on building twelve hundred. After speaking with the electrician onsite, it does appear that there are multiple buildings onsite where we will be doing this, but at this time, only three of those permits have been issued, and that is why code enforcement continues to cite daily until all the violations are resolved.
Chief?
Yes ma'am, from, from the fire department's perspective, we inspect our apartment complexes on a yearly basis. So in twenty-twenty-two, January of twenty-twenty-two this year, we completed our inspections on the Stable Chase Apartments. We only found one minor violation that was completed upon the reinspection of February of twenty-twenty-two of this year. Our enforcement policy stops at the threshold of each door, so we don't actually go inside of the apartments. What we do when we go out is we focus on breezeways, such as making sure the exit lighting's right, the sprinkler system's in the breezeways, the fire department connections, the riser rooms and so forth, that's where our ability stops. So as far as any enforcement beyond that, the fire department doesn't have any. But we did complete our yearly inspection in January of this year, and everything was up to date in, in code or in our compliance as of February of twenty-twenty-two this year.
So from the building department, from, understanding, from my understanding from a lot of the residents that reside out there, that there are a lot of maintenance problems that they have had, was this electrical problem due to the fact of not being up to date?
Based on what I've seen, the electrical equipment out there is dated. I have not seen many rusted-out enclosures that would impose an immediate hazard, but based off what I've seen is from the power surge that occurred in relation to those storms, is that the dated equipment simply couldn't handle it. The other thing is, you have dated equipment like that, you have increased electrical use in every single one of these units as we continuously update technology, and if you don't update electrical equipment, that this is the problem we get to.
And this is a private property complex. I know that I have personally been in contact with the Department of Community Affairs, because this is also a tax credit property as well, and have, they advised me that they are going to be looking into the maintenance and update, updates that need to be done to that particular complex as well. Any questions from the board? Yes.
I, I noticed you stated that mobile units would be provided for air conditioning for those units who may not still have air conditioning for their area. Have we given them a timeline that they must comply so that these apartments won't be stuck next year with air conditioning units in their windows? Have we put any type of timelines on repairs?
To my knowledge, it's not replaced, but it is a daily violation, so they can receive, receive a citation every day. That would seem to motivate me if I was an owner.
Who would do that?
They're doing it.
He said, he said not him.
Code enforcement-
As far as a timeline, I think that would have to come from a, a judge possibly, I can't give them a timeline, but I can cite them every day.
Oh, I see what you're saying, you can't, okay.
Okay, so they've, they've been cited, and it will go before the judge, the judge can give them, if, I guess if they see fit, the judge could give them a timeline, I don't know. I just know that I've been in touch with Department of Community Affairs, DCA, and I know that they're working from their end, because there are some compliance issues that apparently have not been followed if you have this type of old electrical equipment that's there, and it hasn't been updated as long as the complex has been there. So they've got to bring a lot of things up to date, but we have been working with all of our local nonprofits, connecting Henry and a lot of the food banks to make sure that, you know, we were meeting the needs of a lot of the residents out there as well. And we, connecting Henry, I know we had some senior citizens that were out there that lost their medication. Connecting Henry, we were able to give them gift cards from Kroger to get their insulin replaced, to get food replaced. So we have been working with them from, you know, the standpoint of what we can from the county perspective. The main thing is that we just want them to bring everything in compliance so people can have air conditioning.
Absolutely.
Chair, if I may, Commissioner Thomas, just to address your, your timeline question. So what code enforcement has also been doing on there is, with it being private property, of course, we can't, we can, code can mandate the repairs, but that's why they've been doing inspections daily and citing them daily because they have not been made. So they'll just continue to receive citations until, they've also issued court summons, and at that time, like Chair Howell stated, a judge can issue a mandated timeframe, and at that point, depending on the judge, in other cases I've been involved with, they might say, you have to provide other accommodations if it's not completed.
Thank you.
There are no other questions or comments, thank you all very much. Can I call for public comment now?
Yes, we have nobody signed up.
Okay, approval of the minutes, July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, call BLC meeting for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three millish rate, and approval for the July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, regular BLC meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes? Okay, can I get a second? Okay, all in favor? If there's no discussion, all opposed, motion carries. Upcoming meeting is August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two. At four PM is a special call meeting to discuss public safety facility needs. August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two at six-thirty PM is a regularly scheduled BLC meeting. September seventh of twenty-twenty-two at nine AM is a nine AM meeting, it is moved from Tuesday to Wednesday due to the holiday. It is a regularly scheduled BLC meeting. Executive, executive session litigation. Can I get a motion for us to go into executive session? No? Nancy? Do we need to go into executive session?
Yes, Your Honor, um, yes.
Yes, Your Honor?
I'm sorry.
Okay, can I get a motion for us to go into executive session? This should only take a second. Second, we have a motion and a second, okay? We're going to go into executive session at this, at this moment, thank you.
Me too.
Somebody threw it away, maybe? I don't know. All right, well, thank you.
For us to reconvene from the executive session. All in favor? Okay, I need approval of the affidavit and resolution pertaining to the executive session. Can I call, can I get a motion? In a second, okay? All in favor? Any opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned. Have a good day.